Well, it's just after six, so I will call the meeting to order. And I guess we should handle these continuances first, see if we don't keep you. What did, Ken, what the continued public hearing on Borrego, did they suggest a date or just?
Yes, they did. They sent a, an email in. Says, good afternoon, all, on behalf of Borrego Solar Systems, I'm emailing a request to continuance for tonight's planning board hearing on 140 Tyhonet Road to February 8th, 2021. They received Charlie's comments and want to continue so they can address the comments.
And on the special permit for Tyler Ave, is there a preferred date for?
Um, I think the eighth would work well if that works with your agenda.
Can the, the February 1st, is that the public hearing or is that a?
That's the public hearing on the HRE, the Hospitality Recreation Entertainment Bylaw.
Okay, so we're gonna keep that solely for that purpose. So yeah, okay, the, the eighth would be. Does that work with everybody, what members?
That's mine.
Oh, there's Richard.
Yeah, the eighth works.
And the public hearing for Zero North Carver Road, do they? I don't know if anybody's here for that.
Good evening, yes, Sarah Sterns is here for Zero North Carver from Gills &amp; Thomas.
Just a, just a question at this point, do you wish to proceed? We don't have a full board with us tonight.
We would prefer to wait for the full board.
Okay.
How many members do you have this evening?
Uh, three.
Yeah, I think we'd like to wait so that we have the benefit of discussing the project with all.
We do have the Mullen Rule available to us where people missing one hearing could look at the video, but if you'd rather do it live, that's up to you.
Does, since this is just site plan review, do we need the super majority for vote for it?
Yes, you do.
And this is a five-member board?
Correct.
It is.
Okay. Um, will the, since we haven't opened the hearing yet, will it need to be re-advertised and reposted?
No, I will open it and continue to the eighth, if that works for you.
Okay, yes, I think, I think we would prefer to do that just for the first one to get all the information out at once. Thank you.
Sounds like a plan. All right, so with that, I would look for motion to continue the site plan for 140 Tyhonet Road. Borrego Solar Systems to February 8th.
Motion to continue Borrego Solar Systems, February 8th. Tyhonet Road.
Have a second. Do we lose Richard again?
Here. I have a hard time with the mute and unmute. I'm sorry, I second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Uh, next would be to continue the special permit for five Tyler Avenue to February 8th.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
You just turned green, Richard. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. And finally, to continue the site, public hearing for site plan review for Zero North Carver Road. B E R E L L C, I guess.
Motion to continue.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, does the hearing officially need to be opened first before continuing?
That was probably could be a good idea.
Thank you.
I don't usually go. All right, I'll look for a motion to open the hearing. How's that? Um, all the paperwork in place, Ken?
Yes, it is. Uh, you had a public notice that the public hearing will be on January 25th at 6:00 PM for a site plan review for the requirements of Article 3, Table Principal Use Regulations of Wherein bylaws to B E R E L L C. Here at Gills &amp; Thomas, 32 Court Street, Plymouth, Mass, seeking construction and installation of a dual-use, large-scale, ground-mounted solar energy facility located at Zero North Carver Road, wherein mass.
And all the cards have been returned?
Yes, the green cards have returned.
All right, I'll look for, did I do a motion to open?
You asked for it.
I asked.
Motion to open the public hearing on Zero North Carver Road. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Motion to con, motion to continue public hearing on Zero North Carver Road. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you all.
Thank you. I'll get used to these Zoom meetings one of these days.
We're all living in strange times, it's fine. Um, I, I, if I may just add one comment, um, I believe that our materials were sent to Mr. Rowley too, so this added time may give him the opportunity to review and we're happy to work with him as the board sees fit, um, and as needed prior to the next hearing.
Was that in the response letter, Ken, or was that for something else?
The response letter was for 140, um.
Okay.
George, I just need confirmation that the 53G account is set up for it, that's all. I have the documentation, I'm just waiting for that out of Ken's office.
Okay, we'll make sure that that gets, we'll close the loop on that. Thank you all.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
All right, back to preliminary business, we have an A, an approval not required plan for Lawson Realty Trust LLC for 504 Main Street.
Yes, we're here tonight.
I have a copy of the plan, I don't know if either of you do, or Ken can put it up?
I, I'm looking at it, George, on here locally.
The, um, this is a plan you've seen before. Think they came in for a I think it was just a looksie, I don't think it was an, was it an apple, actual application for N A and R or?
It was just informal business.
Formal.
But i- if you want, I can start with a narrative. I know that, wow, the representative Pete Lyons from Collins Engineering, he's trying to share his screen right now to bring the plan up for everyone to see on this Zoom.
Well, that'd be good.
There it is. So would you like to describe what you?
Yeah, I'll start, I'll start with a narrative if I could. Uh, thank you all, good evening, my name is Brendan Brewer. I'm the representative for the property located at 504 Main Street where him. Uh, this property was a foreclosed property and in pretty bad shape. Uh, we made every effort to restore the home back to its original form, from the exterior. We're here before you today with an A and R plan, looking for the relief of the 150-foot radius requirement. Um, the proposed newly created lot has 105-foot radius. Other than that, it has the sufficient lot square footage, lot frontage, and uh, meets all the required setbacks. Uh, we had come previously, you know, informally, and we took your considerations, went back with our engineering, and uh, we came, we originally had a 98-foot radius. We were able to increase that to 105-foot, and uh, we're not looking for any relief on the existing lot, but just the newly created lot. And uh, we just believe that this is the best use of the property for us, um, with, with a builder, um, and the owner, but uh, we're looking forward to, uh, keep going on this project, but we're kind of at a standstill here, um, until we figure out what we can do, uh, with the property. And uh, we're looking for, um, basically the relief of the 150-foot radius tonight.
And endorsement of the A and R as well.
Yes. Any questions, anybody? Can you see that okay, or?
Do you have?
What the advantages of, um, that three-legged line that separates the house from the rest of the lot? Why there couldn't be a straight line out to Main Street?
That's to meet the requirement for the frontage on the existing home with 150-foot for the M I 30 zone.
Oh, okay, I was looking at that other number there, wasn't aware it was that far, okay.
Right, the frontage for this lot would be the 201 feet of frontage on Stony Run Drive.
We only need a simple majority to, tonight on this, on the?
That's correct.
So I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the, what I think is the existing lot lines and the lot on the left. If I, if I'm correct, and I need you to confirm for me, it's basically a rectangle right now with Main Street and Stony Run Drive. The west and north borders. And you've added land on the south side from the, from the number 504 lot, which is Lot B here, to give it the proper, uh, square footage. Is that, do I understand correctly?
That's, that's correct.
And if you left the lots exactly how they are now, um, you'd need, uh, the lot on the, on the west side, uh, doesn't meet the, the square footage requirement, is that right? And doesn't meet the radius?
Well, the, the, both lots will meet the square footage requirement. I don't know if I understood that correctly, but with, the relief that we're looking for would just be the radius on this newly created lot.
George, do we have any, um, any history on, or any precedent for this that you know of? I haven't been on the board long enough, I haven't seen a request like this before. This, this one was in front of us before, but would we continue it?
No, it, it, it just came in for discussion the first time.
Yep.
And I think the lot lines, the frontage was a little different for the big house because for some reason in this area, there's two frontages listed, one for single family and one for multifamily, and they've decided to leave 504 Main Street as a single family, is that correct?
That, that's correct, I mean, it's in an M I 30 zone, we have the square footage and the requirements to make it a multifamily. We don't think that's what's best for the neighborhood, um, it's pretty much, you know, single families all under, you know, all, most, most of the lots, if not all of them around us, uh, undersized, they're under a half acre. You know, and they're all pretty much single families behind us, um, you know, we, we cleaned up a blight, we've had a pretty good relationship so far with all the neighbors, and we think the best thing for us to maximize this, instead of going to a multifamily, would be to, you know, um, put a single family there, and we're still creating, you know, uh, more housing in the town.
You're muted, Rich.
Sorry, so George, Ken, or Charlie, um, any precedent for, um, granting an A and R with an undersized, uh, radius circle?
Under section eight fifteen, six fifteen of the zoning bylaw, there's a lot shape factor, which asks for the circle to be put into the lot to show that the area can meet the, uh, dimensions as, as, as required by the, the, uh, the frontage. Uh, but, uh, this, uh, section of the bylaw also says that the planning board has the authority to waive the, the requirement. That was added in, uh, 2004.
Have we done it before? Anyone aware of it?
Yeah, we've, we've done it in the past.
So the thing, the thing that comes to my mind is, uh, on this is, and I, I've driven up there to look at it, um, that lot's basically unusable unless we, uh, make some, uh, some allowances here. And I think, I think, uh, what I'm seeing in front of me is, has minimized the number of allowances that being asked for. Definitely could use the housing, we could use the, the bedrooms, so I'd be in favor of moving forward on this, I don't see any reason not to, I'm sure there are some, but on the surface, I, I'm positive toward this.
The only, um, see is that maybe you could straighten out the, uh, what is that, north-south dividing line to get a little further away from the existing dwelling?
We'd have to adjust the back of that line next to the garage, George, in order to preserve the frontage and not unbalance the area, because you've only got, uh, what's it, like 22 square feet to play with on the smaller of the two lots, so I would love to see the line straight rather than encroach on the house as much as it does. But, um, I don't think there's much you can do with it, um, unless they want to seek a variance on the Board of Appeals.
Well, you could pick it up on the southern tip there, bring it down to that corner, I don't know if it comes up to the same number or not, but you know what I mean? The southern tip of, uh, just above where it says map 61, lot 1175?
There is, there is, you know, 7,200 square footage that's still in play on, on Lot B. That you could bring over, but I think the, the reasoning for that jog is basically to meet that 150-foot of frontage on that existing lot.
But you wouldn't put the house back there, I don't think.
No, 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 no.
And, uh,
Well, that, George, you had a, you had a thought, I just got thinking of it a little bit here. In the area that's on the extreme southerly end of that lot, it's chopped off on the picture that I'm looking at. But there you go, Ken, thank you. If you were to take out a piece of that out of Lot B and add it to Lot A, then you might be able to straighten out that lot, so you could balance it, make it a straight line, and pull it away from the big house. It would, it would, uh, reduce the, uh, diameter of the circle somewhat. But there's still plenty of, uh, building area, and if you look at all of the houses that are up on Tower Terrace, they're all of the same, uh, smaller lot size than this, and I don't think that would be a significant issue. You could balance the area so it would still have 30,000 square feet minimum by taking a piece out of the southerly end of Lot B and adding it to Lot A when you straighten it out.
Let's say you've got a nice, nice solar room there, you wouldn't want a fence to be 10 feet away from it.
No, but what it would do would be to impact the 100-foot diameter circle, so you'd have to consider that you'd have to reduce that 100 feet to something less than that, to do it. Collins, any idea how much that dimension would change?
Good evening, guys, can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Yep.
Um, what's that, to change the dimension, uh, so basically what, to extend the, this, the lot line parallel with the carriage house, uh, extend it straight north until we intersect with the 73-foot line? Is that what you're talking about doing?
Yeah, roughly, right. To your, to the end of your frontage.
Yeah, I can, I can get you an area, just trying to sneak out of this screen without shutting you down totally, so, hang on a second.
Pete, I think we originally had it like that, but when we tried to increase the radius, I think that's, uh, we might have jogged that out.
Yeah, no, I mean, that, that's the concern, um, from last time, we were looking to increase that radius. So, you know, so that's kind of how we ended up with the minimum 10 feet to the existing 504. Um, it's to preserve the, the max diameter of the new circle on Lot A. So, I mean, I, I can get you an area, you know, if we were to do the flip-flop, um, either way, Lot B would still have sufficient frontage, you know, we'd be adding a couple hundred or, you know, maybe a few thousand square feet onto Lot A. Let me just get you a rough number quick. Uh, yeah, the area is about 1,000 square feet, if we were to straighten out that line, that would be added to Lot A. And the, you know, you'd end up minimizing the circle to, to about 95 feet, uh, just quick numbers for Lot A. I guess it really comes down to the board's, um, opinion on which way to proceed with that, um, unless Brendan could speak to, you know, what, what you, you guys might try to be doing with the lot in the future? Are you trying to preserve that backspace on Lot A? Um, is there any reason we don't want to bring that line in? You know, Brendan, maybe you could speak to that, but.
On Lot A, are we talking on the southern, southern point of that plan?
Um, no, the, the 10-foot jog near the existing, uh, the 10-foot offset to the existing 504 residence, uh, there, it's.
I have no problem moving that off, um, it won't, you know, it just shrinks that radius, we were just trying to.
Yeah, that's all, yep.
So, we're, we're willing to flex on that. Whatever the, if the board thought that that would be better for the lot, to back up.
I'm just thinking it would be more proportioned with, for 504, it would, I think the end result would be better.
Yep.
For both problems. And you could make.
I agree, yeah. I think the spot line moved would be better.
So, if, if that's, if that's what you like, we can have that drawn, we will, we have to continue to the next meeting and have a, that lot line moved, or with, uh, can you do an approval with that as a condition, or no?
Well, we can't condition an A and R, but, um, it's the board's pleasure.
I, I would say that in this case, I mean, I mean, the existing neighborhood, a single family probably fits best, so if you move the line, it makes the most sense as opposed to three family or. Well, Russell, it's my, it's my understanding that, um, the, the A and R just approves the lot, the lot would be, is in an area where multifamily is allowed, isn't that true? So, we have no control about what, uh, what would, uh, go in there ultimately, all we, all we can do is approve a lot with, uh, a smaller than expect, than required, uh, radius circle. Oh, I thought he was presenting a single family. Well, let's be ver, let's be clear, maybe I'm wrong, but, um, he, right now, the developer has indicated his intention is to do a single family, but he is not held to that by anything we do. I got you. Is that true, George?
Uh, correct, you, you're looking at frontage and area. And plus a lot shape factor.
I take the developer as, as being, you know, forthright, and that, right now, that's what his intentions are, but, um, things could change. Yeah. Valid reasons, but, um, George, we, you can't conditionally approve an A and R, has to be exactly how it is. God love to approve this for him tonight, but I also like the idea of simple, making the lines as simple as possible, I, you know, it looks like we're gerrymandering and, uh, which is, you know, legal and, and whatnot, but anything we can do to make it clean, let the guy in five, the existing dwelling mow his lawn with straight lines would be good.
That's it, there's a nice sunroom on 504, and you wouldn't want a six-foot fence 10 feet from it.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's the right thing, I, I would, I would like to see the line straightened out, give a little more space from five, the existing dwelling, 504. Uh, reduce the, the radius circle down to 95 or whatever, I'm okay with that, I think that's the right move.
Richard, to ask you a question, uh, I believe that the planning board's got 21 days to render a decision uh, from the date of filing, and I believe the date of filing would be considered tonight, um, because it's submitted to the board. So that between now and February 8th, there's plenty of time for the plan to be revised to show that line straightened out. Uh, but you still have to vote on a reduction in the 100-foot diameter circle.
Yeah, I'm right with you, Charlie. George, do you remember if, if we have a precedent that has over 50 feet in that circle that we've waived? Or have we waived circles that are a lot closer?
Um, I don't know exactly, but it's funny, which, it's to prevent hockey stick-shaped lots and.
Right. Yep.
This is not, is, uh, this is more like a goalie stick.
Yeah.
That one.
Yep. So I, so I suggest we straighten out that line on, uh, on the, uh, west side of the existing, existing lot, the existing dwelling lot, and, uh, I think we need, we owe it to the, we owe it to the developer and the engineering firm here to let them know that with that change, that these three members here tonight, um, would a- approve this A and R, I mean, I would.
Yeah, I think that's a, a fair assumption that we, we stick to this when we have a full board, once we've made this recommendation.
Fair enough.
I would say probably going to gain your square footage down at the southern most, which would eliminate 504 from having to go behind your property for access. So is that, uh, yeah, I don't think too many people build 50-foot deep houses. Which would be about with 20 feet of frontage and 10-foot rear setback. You're going to be around 50 feet building area, front to back. You could even move up and make some sort of an L-shaped thing if you wanted to. So that's where the board is at, at this point, uh, we're good with the reduction in the shape factor. And and to go from the carriage house where you have the setback dimension 10 feet from that corner, back out to Main Street is the line we're talking about.
Pete, you understand that, right?
Yes, I got you, yep. I'm actually just sketching it up right now, so I can clean it up later, yep.
At the end of that 25.41 dimension, measurement?
Yep. We're going to run that straight. We're gonna run that straight, uh, straight north, almost perpendicular to Main Street and tie it in with the seventy-three foot line. And uh that that leaves us with the ninety-three foot radius for the proposed lot A circle.
Hard to read with the line you're going to adjust. That's running parallel to Stony Run Drive, is it not?
Correct.
Almost.
Just looking at the two bearings and can't quite make them out, but they look almost parallel.
Ah, yes, they are.
A little bit off, but a lot more Uniform than it is now.
Pete, if we came in and and met that uh, that in that seventy-five, well, that's coming off towards the uh sunroom there. If we met that halfway, would that bring it off of the sunroom and keep a little bit of a bigger radius there or?
Um, can, can you say that again? What? So bring it into where the ten-foot dimension is?
Past that about, almost towards Main Street. Just leave a little bit of a jog. I was just thinking if that increased the The radius, but I I think that if we do that and make the line straight with what the suggestion of the board was, I think that'll, that'll work.
Just roughing it out on the screen. It looks like projecting the line which is parallel to the carriage house out toward that seventy-three foot line. The intersection point would be about halfway on the seventy-three line.
Yep, you're uh, you're pretty close. I I got it drawn out actually on my computer and it It directs right to the thirty seconds on the bearing of that line. So, yeah. Uh, just shy of halfway up that lot line towards Main Street is your intersection.
Just about the same distance as a projection of the front line of the house.
Yep, and then uh we can, we can easily gain that area back in the the southern portion of the lot.
Everybody understand that?
Yep.
Yep.
Very good, uh motion to continue to the eighth.
Second.
Discussion, is there? All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. I'll see you on on the eighth. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
The future, I think that's all I have. Uh, Ken, do you have anything? No, your next meeting is on the zoning next week, next Monday.
I want, I had some forty-eight hour business I just wanted to talk to a little bit, if I could, George?
Sure.
I want to talk a little bit to the board about um the Deacon School project. I've shared information with you. And um Uh that the W, as a WRA member, we've been working on. If I could uh share my screen just for a second. Can people see the map?
Yes.
Okay. The WRA's been working with um Serped and We've worked a little bit with Penrose, asked them to look at this property where the Deacon School is now about what we should do with it. Uh, once the school closes down and It's, all the feedback has come back uh that it's a ve- very valuable commercial space and we should be using it for a commercial space. The Serped organization has put together an analysis. I've shared that with you guys. At the WRA meeting, we've talked about how that land has to be rezoned to be, to use it for commercial space and Uh, Ken shared with us, um, or the Serpent actually thought that the, the business development overlay district was A good model that could possibly be expanded into that area. And Ken's looked at that pretty close. And um, we don't feel that way any longer. We do think that The the B-dod may need to be tweaked or upgraded or a a different type of zoning proposal is necessary for the Deacon School and In my perfect world, um, I'd really like to see the planning board and the WRA work together. And uh maybe meet together and discuss the type of zoning that we want to put into that Deacon School area. And um That way, we, we work together or come up with something that uh both the WRA and the planning board are both Comfortable with and happy with. It can sponsor together. I don't know if that's feasible or possible, but that's just what my pipe dream is anyway. But I wanted to share with you just a little bit about what we're talking about here. The, this area here It outlined in purple with the crosshatches, that's the existing business development overlay district and We're talking about um this lot right here, one oh one, one oh five, one oh three. The railroad tracks here, maybe one thousand A, not sure. Um, but you can see it does not touch. It came, comes real close. It does not touch the existing B-dod, nor does it touch Wareham Crossing. But um, the overlay district that we're talking about that for the Deacon School should probably en- encompass Uh Wareham Crossing. I know there's some zoning issues there that could be straightened out. Uh, Ken, pl- please feel free to muzzle me if I'm saying anything stupid or wrong.
I agree, Rich.
Okay. My real goal, though, is to, is to bring this to the planning board early, because we're very early in this right now. And um, ask this planning board to, to walk away from the meeting tonight, just thinking about Would they be willing to work with the WRA, with Serped, to come up with a comprehensive zoning proposal For this area to take advantage of the uh, the commercial opportunities that are there. So, um, there's no, I'm not asking any question tonight. I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention, what's going on and And uh ask you to think about participating in the creation of this proposal slash zoning overlay. Whatever it ends up being. Um, I think it'd be a great oppo- it's a great opportunity for interdepartmental uh cooperation. Uh, something this town uh really needs, in my opinion, and this would be a great way to kick something like that off. Anyway, that's all I have.
Ask a question, Richard?
Sure.
Would you include those um, single-family house lots on the north side of Main Street?
Um, that's a, that's a great question, Charlie. If you look at this and, and the answer is, uh, we don't know yet. And I think that if the WRA and the planning to get, planning board were working together Uh on this, it's a question that we as a, as a team could, could uh go after. I'm gonna, it's interesting, if you look, um, the, you're talking about these houses right here and the lodge.
Right.
Yeah, they're in the industrial zoning area.
Yeah, that whole thing doesn't make any sense to keep it industrial since it's, it was put in The industrial zone when commercial uses were allowed. So that's how the um The whole uh Wareham Crossing development uh got put in there. But it would seem to me that it would be a good time to change that, make it commercial so that it is Uh, not in the industrial zone, rezone those small lots. If you're going to think about the Deacon School property, do that and also include the, the property where Well, it's not Bionomics now, whatever the name of that is. Just beyond the railroad track.
Hmm, that, that was.
They're in an MR thirty zone, I believe. So why not make them uh compliant for Commercial uses and retail uses like they're, they are.
Wh- which one's that, Charlie? What property?
The one on the other side of Station Street.
That's across the railroad track and it's uh lots. Oh, I can't, the number is.
It's Smithers Vician is the uh business there. At thirteen Station Ave.
Yeah, it was Bionomics. I don't know what they go by now.
Oh, right here.
Yeah.
Smithers, yeah. I couldn't think of the name. I was going back a few names ago with Springboard.
Yeah, I, 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 you guys, what you guys have brought up is something that's been in my mind. Ken has informed me about The goofy zoning for Wareham Crossing. Um, I've looked at the, the industrial zoning versus the commercial zoning that's down there. I've looked At the Smithers. It, uh, none of it makes a whole lot of sense. It'd be a great opportunity to clean it up. And uh, and do something with some foresight and long-range planning. So Seems like every time we try to do something in this town, it's going to take a town meeting vote to change the zoning. So, I'd love, I mean, be nice to get out in front of that a little bit for once. But anyway, like I said, um We don't have the full board tonight. I have shared the, the link with everybody for the uh, the The Serped, oops, the, the Serped analysis that they did on the property in So this board has that link. Um, you can go in there and see what uh work they did and um And hopefully, we can uh, we're, in my, like I said, in my perfect world, we'll do this together. So Think about that and we'll uh, we'll, we'll put it back on the agenda for our next meeting and when we have Mike and Mike here.
My only negative comment on that, Richard, would it, that it not be an overlay. Change the zoning so that it's Set hard and fast on it would be commercially zoned and uh let it fly that way.
Charlie, you and I should have a conversation because I, I, I don't know the pros and cons. You obviously have some thoughts on the cons of overlays. Uh, I'd love to hear your, a little more in-depth from you about why you feel that way.
Maybe somebody will, maybe they'll release the uh restrictions on having cups of coffee without a mask on.
That would be great, wouldn't it?
Would.
You could screen it through your mask.
Hey, George, can I talk to this here?
Um, who, who's talking?
This is Jim Menees.
Hi, Jim.
How you doing?
All right. I, this is not an agenda item, but I will take some, a little comment if you.
Yeah, well, some of us are looking to repurpose that property. Possible senior center, um, community center, uh possibly looking at it for, for senior housing. Um, those are some um issues that have been On the table for a number of years. And um, for some reason, the Study didn't look at repurposing the buildings or, or, or housing. And um, I'd rather not see the commercial district coming across Main Street any more than it has. I'd like to keep it between Main Street and four ninety-five, industrial, commercial. It just, you know. So I, I just, and it's just not me. I mean, I've been speaking with people and um There's interest in what I just discussed with you. So I just want you to keep an open mind to that also. Thank you.
And, and that's the intent. Uh, this is just a flyby.
No, it's okay. Thank you.
Telling the board that we'd like to get together. We, we all know those other uses are in mind. And there's been some uh examination of that, but we'll, we'll take that up at another time. But I think it's a good idea that the planning board be involved from the beginning.
That's all I have, George.
Very good. Thank you, Richard. Ken, did you have another report or anything? I, we used that.
No, I'm all set. Thanks.
The article for Monday night's discussion.
That was distributed to the, to the board and sent around and the revised version of it.
I mean, the main thing that, that I've come up with, and I think I mentioned it before, was if we must have a finding that Anything proposed meet the intent of the R one thirty protection, groundwater protection. And if they can address that to the, you know, in a manner that the board is comfortable with, then Then they have a project, I guess. I was kind of surprised to see the other athletic things had been taken off the table from the Applicant, but Anyway, we'll get in, we'll dig into that Monday night. Uh, that's all I have on the agenda this evening. Is there Anything further?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, George.
Sounds like an idea.
Second.
Want to discuss it for a while?
I've done discussing.
Big discussion on Monday.
All in favor?
Aye.
You know what I do with my phone, but if anybody has the time, we, we adjourned at uh Si- six forty-eight?
Six forty-eight.
Sounds good.
Great. Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.